Yes, I don't like it. I don't like it in that format because I can't follow up. I had to grab another agenda in order for me to do it so I can follow through. Too bad my fingers don't run away. We're on record at 5:30. They're going to call the meeting to order. Okay, updates to the agenda.
Um, we have one in that we need to correct the town equipment rates.
Okay, so, public comment.
Any idea when the stop dumps?
May 17th.
What is that?
May 17th. Brush dump.
We don't take dumps.
No stops, it's brush. It's a brush dump. No stop.
Is that the same time they start the state park boat inspections too on the 17th?
Now that's on Memorial Day weekend.
Oh, that's a different horse than our.
I believe the hours are 10 to 2, I think.
Yeah.
For the brush dump?
For the brush dump.
That's only on Saturday too.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, any idea when that, one over here is going to be patched? I want a five here.
The cut from the water department that we're waiting on everybody to get all their stuff. I know they'll be discussing the next water board meeting again. They're waiting for all the pieces and parts.
Getting it. I know they were working on getting it done.
Yeah.
But I haven't heard, I haven't heard a date.
When's that debris going to be picked up? Do you know?
That's supposed to have been done already. Yeah, that was supposed to have been done already, so we'll have to get after H2O on that.
I'm just curious, that's all.
Yeah, yeah, we, they, they told the water board that they would be taking care of that, but obviously that hasn't happened.
Well, no, I'm not. Whatever, I'm just curious. When is it going to be?
It's on the agenda, let's put it that way.
Yeah, it's on, it's on the water board's agenda every meeting and we get updates from them and.
Okay.
That's where they're at on that. Um, anyone else for public comment? Okay, road department update. I don't see Nick here.
Nick is not, Nick is out working on a road as we speak, so he texted me that he's not going to make it tonight.
What road is that, Mike?
He is out on Newark Road out that way somewhere. Um, fixing, I, I guess it was bad and it started raining on him when he was out there, so he said he's not going to make it in for this.
Okay, so the next up is the new truck purchase. Um, so as everybody knows, the current truck that we have will not pass its inspections. Um, Nick has gone around.
Unless she's like over here, sometimes there's chairs on that side.
Hold on, somebody's not on mute.
They got it.
Okay, so the, the truck that we have will not pass inspection. Um, Mike and Nick have gone around and they are recommending the purchase of the Ford Super Duty F-350, which can be ready in about two weeks' time.
I've got a question. So, I'm assuming that the, uh, the dump body, the sander and.
And the plow is all it.
And the plow is what they're giving in exchange? Because if I look at this, it says trade difference, which is the same as a 60, as a.
Right, right. He just got the quote back from them. If we want to trade in our truck, they'll give us 4,000, our current, they'll give us 4,000 for the current truck, including our current plow. Nick isn't sure that that's the best option for us because he said the plow we probably could sell by itself for 5,000.
Sure, yeah, I would imagine.
That's brand new. We just bought that last year.
Right, and so it's up to you guys if you want to trade in or if you want them just to put it on the lawn and put it up for sale, so.
What's the, um, what's wrong with the truck?
It rotted completely.
Oh, it's rotted, it's got.
I don't think it dumps anymore.
Nothing works on it.
Yeah, and say, and I know, um.
The frame's all gone.
It's been brought to us before that it was going to happen, which is why we started putting that money away.
It's something that I would certainly recommend in the future. We, we don't keep them that long. You know, they should get replaced every five to six years. Because we've spent a lot of time with this truck over the last two years with it being down, being repaired, needing constant work. And so not only are we wasting the fact that the truck isn't available, but we're wasting our, our staff time as well, running it back and forth to get fixed. So, and I'm not quite sure how that happened because we were trying to be better about doing that because we've been doing that with the dump trucks. So we've been replacing them every five to six years, so they're actually of value to them still, we'll go to trade them in. And our staff aren't spending a million dollars in repairs on trucks that should just be replaced. This one somehow slid under the radar, so.
That's because it's old.
So Mike, when I went down there, I talked to Nick and I found out it wasn't inspectable. I went through the truck with Nick and he was showing me some of the stuff there, but he also still, still thinks that it's better just for a short time to put it out front because I think we'd get more on the front lawn, I believe. Because that plow, like I said, the blaze brand spanking.
He thought we might, you know, he said, you know, we probably might get 8,000 for it, which would, you know. Of course, he has other pieces of equipment that he wants you to buy, wants to buy with that $8,000, but we could talk about that in a future meeting.
So what's the, what's the price?
Uh, the price with everything is 98,719.
Yeah, 97,900.
98,719. The sander, the dump body, all the lights installed.
Yeah, that, that isn't really outrageous. Paul Velez could pay 92,000 for his one ton pickup.
Yeah, no, I thought it was actually a, a pretty decent price and they can have it ready in two weeks.
Yeah, I'm glad you're going with a diesel.
Okay, so any other questions?
I'm going to make a motion.
Would it be feasible to have them undercoated?
We have been undercoating all of our new vehicles when we've been getting.
Yeah, and that one had been in the past, I think maybe, but that was, I mean, it's 10 years old, so it just.
Great.
The dump body doesn't work on the current one.
So can I get someone to make a motion to authorize the purchase of the new?
I'll make a motion to authorize the purchase of a new one-ton truck with twin-state Ford in the amount of $98,719, extending the $50,000 in the Sheez Road Equipment Budget along with $48,719 from the Road Equipment Reserve Fund and authorize the interim town manager, Mike Straight, to complete any necessary.
Yeah, Bill seconded that. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Next up.
While we're on roads, while we're on roads, can we go ahead and do the, um, the addition to the agenda?
The equipment rates?
Yep.
Yeah.
What I thought we were going to go. So Mike had sent us an email. The equipment rates got carried over incorrectly two years ago. Thus regarding, it's subsequently gone incorrectly as we've made our increases. Um, so these are the rates that when we're doing our grants and when we're doing other things that they are associated with the equipment. So they should be at 170 for the grader, 110 for the truck, 110 for the sidewalk tractor, 130 for the backhoe, and 140 for the front-end loader. So does anybody have any questions on that?
Is that including an operator?
No, operators are separate.
Okay.
That is the equipment rate itself.
We only actually use this rate when we're doing like our, our grant aid for any of our grants for the roads. That's what these rates are for, and that's how we found it. We actually got pulled for an audit on one of our grants from 23. And so I had to go back and pull the minutes where I saw that we had changed the, the rate back then and it never got reflected in the 24 budget, you know, in the 24 minutes from the select board. It didn't go up like it was supposed to because somebody made a motion back then to increase it by $10 for each piece of equipment. And so it just got carried forward incorrectly, so this will fix that. So they're going forward. We, we won't have that issue.
If there are any other questions, if not, we'll take a motion to set those rates.
Make a motion to correct the town equipment rates as set as follows, as we all read. Do they need to be repeated?
We'll give you a copy of that. Okay, perfect. Can I get a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Moving over to the water system loan agreement. So that is going back to the bond. It's the bond for the.
It's the Vermont Bond Bank, right? Right, the State Revolving Fund is where the loan is coming from. It's done, it's managed and done by Vermont Bond Bank. And this is actually an amendment to an alone. We had an original loan for 30, I'm thinking 39,000 originally for the P E R on the water treatment plant upgrades. When the state came back and said we need to evaluate other source options that of course increased the engineering cost. And so this is, was the addition that was added to that. So the new total is 84,100. And we've actually already spent that and we've actually already paid for that and they just now got us the grant agreement or the loan agreement to actually pay for it, so.
Any questions on that one? We'll take a motion to.
I'll make a motion to approve and execute the loan agreement RF3-448-1.1 from the Vermont State Revolvering, Revolvering Loan Fund for the pre-design amendment for improvements to the water systems, to treatment plants, and to evaluate alternative water sources in the amount of $84,100.
Who wants to second that?
Is this something we need to sign?
Yeah, oh yes, there's all kinds of signatures for you guys.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Everybody signing it? Everybody has to sign it, but you go sign in once, first page, just see there. Say, I thought when I looked form that. Everybody's signature here. I don't know where you want to start or again? You can. Sign a stamp. So you don't skip. Yeah, then we get another page after that, but.
Another page?
Yeah, there's another one in there.
We're going to, we're going to hand it around, have everybody sign this page, then we'll go around the other page. Teresa's like, we're just going to do one page at a time. Get your pens already?
Did somebody hit the microphone to mute you guys? No, okay, there you go.
We're blue, we're still blue.
Okay.
We're just not talking, Mike. We're very concentrated on.
I could see your mouth moving, I couldn't hear you, so I thought, oh, did somebody whack the microphone again?
Mark, here and then it continues on to the next page, so two can sign on this page and then the rest sign, rest, next page, next page. Sounds like a plan. This is who we got first one we had. This pen got three years, the red version. Maybe it's just for supporting. Why is my object?
You're on the top of that second.
I'm right here?
Yeah. Yep, okay. Next up is the passive grant. Uh, so Mike had applied for and received a grant in the amount of $2,500 for safety equipment, correct?
Right, it's buying, we're buying a, um, basket that'll go on to the, um, uh, front loader with the forks where they can lift people up and Bruce can use it to change the banners downtown and the road crew can use it for tree trimming.
And we can eliminate rental costs, right?
Right, right. I mean, we, we pay a lot every year for rental and that stuff. And we do lots of stuff that's, you know, we don't really have the ability when it comes to tree trimming, so. Um, it paid for that. It's buying new chaps, um, for, for the road crew, uh, chainsaw chaps. It's paying part of the uniform costs for safety gear that we have to buy for all of our staff. Um, and it is also buying ergonomically correct mice for the office staff.
Oh, those are obnoxious.
The mice are bad, the, the, the keyboards. I asked everybody, I said, well, do you want the keyboards? They're like, no.
No, those split keyboards are terrible.
They're horrible.
Mike, I recalled in a meeting a few ago where, or I think, so anyways, didn't we, um, discuss, uh, cones? Is some of this money going to go towards, uh, marking? You know, I know that we don't have any anymore. We were talking about cones to block off certain places.
Oh, yeah, that's the other thing that's in there, the other big things, and there's a sign package. We got a whole, full sign package and they have LED paddles and all that good stuff.
Cool.
That was part of that. Sorry, I knew there was, I was forgetting something that wasn't.
That's fine. No, that's good. Thank you.
Any questions other than that on the passive grant?
And that's about a 50/50 match grant. We're, we're a little more than 50% that we have to pay, but not by much.
That's not one that requires a signature, is it? It's just FYI.
No, no, I just, you guys knew that we got it. Because it was really fast. We applied and we got approved to, within two days.
Zip.
I wish they were all like that.
Okay, so Vermont Electric Co-op easement agreement, which is, yeah, it's in the back of the passive. Um, and it goes on for several.
No, it's only.
It's only three pages. I'm looking at the wrong document here. Um, so that is an easement on, or where did it go?
It's only two pages others.
Yeah, I probably just skimmed right over it.
It's right here. It's with that, with the picture.
It's a map. It's, it's over off of Head of the Pond Road in Dupree's gravel pit.
Same, it's going through Dupree's.
The town has a trail over there. It's not really a road, it's a trail, but they would need to put poles in our right-of-way. Um, and I asked Nick and I asked Joel and anybody I could think of that might have any inclination that there would be a problem with this and nobody had a problem with it. So it seems, I mean, when I looked at it, it seemed like it was fine to me. It doesn't really affect anybody.
So any questions on that? And obviously it's to move power to where it needs it.
Right, right. They've got a new service going in and they need to, they need to access the pole that's on Head of Pond Road.
Is it new service for someone or is it just a service, just?
I'm not sure what it is. They're putting a pedestal.
Oh, it's for Pierre?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. I'm assuming we'll, we'll see a building permit or something, that they're going to build something, that's why they need it all along.
There are no other questions on that. I will take the motion to.
I'll make a motion to grant permission to the Vermont Electric Co-op to perform overhead underground work within the road right-of-way on town trail near Dupree Sand and Gravel, which is the route from our.
In the second?
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Three more signatures here. It says Board of Select.
Board of Select, yeah, there's only four?
Yeah, so. I will need more ink in my pen. This is a good one.
You know, everybody to sign this. Teresa?
There's only four lines, so if somebody wants to.
I was looking, I just wondered if you only.
You can sign, sign both, sign the bottom.
Gotcha. Put it under you? On top of me.
Four lines, is that a computer thing?
That's a computer thing, yeah. Yes, I don't know.
We didn't create it.
We created it, we were just stacking on the line and bottom.
Thank you very much. So, moving to the resolution condemning acts on due process. Um, and did everybody get a chance to read that request that we had received?
What page are you on there, Heather, please?
Uh, page, they're not numbered, so it's.
Oh, I thought they were numbered.
Regul, it's, it's.
It absolutely, I'm good.
It's right after the electric thing and goes.
It's very.
Oh, yeah.
Some pages are numbered somewhere.
Oh, that one is numbered. That one is numbered, page one, but it's in the middle. It's after this, it's immediately after the map.
Gotcha, thank you.
Um, had anybody had a chance to read that?
I did.
I haven't.
Okay.
Oh, wait a second. Yes, that was on, that was on a.
That was the.
I did.
We had an email on that.
Yes, yes, I did.
I did read the email.
Yep.
Hey, um, are there questions, comments can, that we want to go on that one? So.
It'll be straightforward.
It's the.
Politics. The board chair line.
Um, yeah, so I think at this point, um, board naturally supports due process and rights. And I feel at this time it's best that, that it's not appropriate for us to adopt the formal resolution at this time and continue to sit with it for a little bit longer. Now we're moving on to budget report. That's too fun. That's you, Mike.
First, let me ask, do you guys have any questions? Do you, well, how do you want, do you want to go through it line by line or do you just, are you good with it? Um, I have a couple of notes I want to give you on it, but, um, I can answer your questions first.
Kind of looked at it and I didn't, I saw a few things that might have raised an eyebrow or two, but nothing that was absolutely out of line. Um.
Though it's a little different that when it comes off of, of NIMRIC, because I tried to do something where, because NIMRIC shows you as a, over the whole year. Okay, so we've only spent this out of this dollar amount. But should we have spent that out of that dollar amount? It's what, I, I don't think it gives you a good picture of where you really are. You know, did we expect to spend that or did we not? And so, I mean, when I went through the, the budget is pretty, we're, we're pretty good, even, even with some, some things that were not planned when we did the budget. Um, the one, the, the two things that are not in here yet are going to be the heating system at the depot building, which we do have a reserve fund that's going to pay a good chunk of that. But we are going to go over on the maintenance line item for that building this year because it's more than what we had in the reserve fund. The second big thing is going to be the town hall sewer line issue. That is not in the budget, so we're going to blow that one out of the water. And, you know, it's one of those things, it happens, we overspend the budget and then we will, we'll figure out as we get close to the end of the year where we are with it. It, it just gets paid off. We don't, it wasn't an optional, it was a repair.
When something breaks and it's not an option, you, you have to take care of it.
We need bathrooms.
It's like saying, oh, the roof's leaking. We don't have money in the budget. We're not going to fix it, let it keep leaking. You have to address certain things.
So they don't show it budget yet because they have not, we haven't gotten the bills yet.
Yeah, that's going to be a little bit out of reach too. I, I was watching, I was down there quite a bit watching that, so it was quite a job, but it's working.
Hey, that's a good thing.
Yeah, it's one of those things, and deal with it.
So there's, um, one line item under the road department that we're going to overspend this year and that's going to be street signs. And that's because, if you remember at the end of last year, there was that grant that they were going to buy road signs with that they, they didn't get the, they didn't put the order in early enough. And so that order came in in January, not in December, and that grant had a hard deadline of December 31st. So it is not reimbursable. There's $1,300 worth of signs that we just, we bought, we've, we've installed them now, but we're not getting the money back for those. And so, but that does kind of eat up all of Nick's road sign budget because he only has $2,000 for road signs. So we will probably go over on that line item, but it's, it is what it is. You know, it was a mistake that was made by, by previous people, so we, we can't fix that now.
Unfortunately, we're stuck holding the bucket on that one, so.
We are, that's, um, the, the rest of the road department's actually doing well. Most of the other departments are good. Um, you'll notice I did do a combo kind of line when it comes to, um, my position, town administrator and town manager, because those three line items are kind of all jumbled together right now. Um, because my hours are still all going on rec and economic development, even though I'm doing the town manager job. But Katie is also working and her hours are going underneath the town manager job as well. And then there was the whole, you know, when Noah left, you know, there was all the payouts of everything. So that line item is not nearly as bad as I expected it was going to look, but, um, when you combine all of them together, we're good, but it's, um, I didn't think it was right that you guys didn't see them together because they are kind of crossed. You know, everything is coming out of that line item because we're down that staff position.
Okay, any other questions on that?
Starting on the MURF stuff soon, so, because all of that we haven't even started on yet.
Moving on to overweight permits. We have any? And we want to look at those. They are, I'm sure we have rig, their insurances and all that.
Riggs Distler is all filled out. That's you.
So we have two overweight permits there for Riggs, Distler and Company out of Jacksonville, Vermont.
I know there was a Jacksonville, Vermont.
Apparently I need to go like research the names of the towns, probably in Southern Vermont. Yeah, I don't know much about Southern.
Yeah.
And then we have one for Andrew J. Lawrence out of West Charleston. I know where that comes. Um, so they're requesting overweight permits and we need a motion to allow us to sign them, or do you guys want to individually look at them?
Like to stick a piece?
Yeah.
Yeah, we have to motion to sign them. I'll make a motion to sign the two overweight permits.
And a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Very.
You started this end and go around or?
Wing is coming.
We'd like these in paper airplane format. Would like these in paper airplane format going forwards.
What's going on with that, Theresa?
I know it, I know it. You just wait.
Yeah.
Theresa and I did fix, we discovered an error with the tax credit that were, or the uh billing credit for the electric bills. We're supposed to be getting from the solar array on Meadow Street. Um, when we started getting the invoices for that, we discovered that one of the bills that was being paid was the school. And the way that that system is set up is they pay the electric bill and then invoice us for ninety percent of it. And they have a they have our checking account and so they just directly debit that account and take the money out. So we paid the electric bill for the school for three months. So we're just waiting, they're gonna give us a statement so we can turn it into the school to get that money back. And we have fixed the electric bills that are getting the credits now, so it is no longer the school.
Kinda makes sense. What's today's date? Seven.
Oh, I do want to let you know, we got our construction permit already for the wastewater treatment plant.
You got what?
We got the construction permit already for the uh wastewater treatment plant.
Okay.
One more good news on that, uh, the nineteenth, they will be setting up the field offices and sludge removal is scheduled to start
Oh.
On the twenty seventh.
Nice. Where's it going?
This lunch is going to Canada.
Really?
Yep. That was actually the low bidder for that, was the company out of Canada.
Are you tariff on that?
Yeah, I was. Politics into it.
Really surprised that that's where it's going.
And we're the nicest.
I'm always not gonna stop over.
That's, that's when, Mike?
Twenty seventh.
Uh, twenty ninth, twenty ninth, or wait a minute, hold on.
Twenty seventh, you just.
Yes, twenty seventh, nineteenth is the, is the field office is being set up.
Everybody see the fluffing happened of the wood chips in the playground?
Looks very nice. I watched actually.
They're gonna this part of it's got some dirty, dirty stuff in it and that's gonna go. And they're gonna deliver some new stuff, not a whole lot, but some stuff to go in there. And then they're gonna clean that on this Sunday, they're cleaning the whole, who's it they? All kinds of bays.
Oh, okay.
So Green Mountain Mulch is where we're getting the mulch from.
Yep.
The road crew or Bruce or somebody's going to remove that part that needs to be removed. And then any K pressure washing is doing the um scrubbing of the playground. And Sunrise Manor has allowed us to hook on to their outside spigot because this building doesn't have an outside spigot. Um, so that we can have water and not have to pay an extra $200 to chuck the water up. So that's gonna happen.
That'll be clean in a few minutes.
There's a lot of people using that.
Oh, there, the traffic in there, I know, as soon as we get the shed together and the other shed together, the rest of the equipment will go out, which is a lot more equipment. Waiting to go out.
So Heather, you need to take a look because Nick just sent me a message because he's listening to, to the, to the meeting from, from the greater and he says that he's already removed your stuff out of the playground.
I have not been over there, thank you. He told me he was going to. I figured it was probably already done.
All that good.
Always with a smile. Now when he sees me, those things will look different.
Well, it's gonna sign it.
I run the other way.
Billy, if three of us has signed, it's good enough, right?
That was just a test.
This is pretty good, passing tests.
So do we know what's going on with the um over by the Irving sign where the water break was? Are we, what's going on with that? Are we just leaving that as sand?
I hope it's supposed to be fixing that soon.
Yeah, yeah, because they, they have to dig it back up.
Yeah, but when are they doing that?
I, well, that's, that's a water board decision.
Water board will reach out and get that information.
Well, no, it's just that, you know, it would be nice to have it done before
Memorial Day.
Or leaving Fourth of July. I mean, get some grass there and stuff. Looks like a beach sand right there. Put some water.
The thing is, the water board only has a meeting once a month, so we only actually sit and talk with them once a month. But I, I, you know, I can reach out to Roger and ask because I have some other issues discussed with them, so. I'll make a call to Roger tomorrow and give a little nudge.
All right. Because that is definitely a temporary fix in there.
Yes, yes. Well, the thing is, I guess there's other ones underneath there too.
Oh, yeah.
Only one.
Yeah. I mean, we can go whittle some more wood, but.
Let's not. But it'll be fine this time of year, Jean. It's, you know, it never happens till this is twenty below zero.
That's right, yeah. Is, is the DI sir out here for future use? We're not planning on having another freeze now.
Hope not.
This.
You never know. I've seen it snow memorial week.
Oh, I've seen it snow memorial weekend too. I just don't want it.
That's not the same one.
I think Jean's the only one.
That Jean don't have a gun, that one.
Came back and. I was ready for it to be paper airplane over the top of my noggin.
Got a paper slipper, I probably got you.
If it was a binder clip, you'd weigh it.
No, I wouldn't.
Oh, goodness gracious. Who's signature's that?
Probably Tucker.
The new guy? I'm like, that's the only one. I kinda figured it was, but it's the only signature.
The new one.
Is this supposed to be Kirk?
Yeah, yes.
We do have all of their uniform and stuff. It's all ordered, it's all coming. We're just waiting because it all gets printed with town writing on it, so we're waiting on that. And we actually did a, um, because a part of their union contract now, we're required to provide them each six pair of pants. And so we, we got those actually from pick and shovel over.
Napa lady. Okay, so we have the minutes from our said we were, because we're gonna be talking about the strategy for hiring, that needs to be done in executive session. Maybe I thought it?
Yeah, you thought it, you just.
I thought it. Did I, did I think it and not say it? Oh, my goodness gracious, yes. So number twelve, town manager search, we are going to move into executive session because we are talking about the strategy and the process for hiring and all that and premature knowledge of that would be detrimental to us. Um, so, yeah, I thought about it. Thank you for reminding me. Um, so the select board minutes, we got them by email and then they are in here, so.
Everybody read them and happy. I think I must accept the minutes of the previous meeting.
And a second, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any other business?
Uh, I have a couple of things. Uh, Mike, were you able to get ahold of library trustees yet?
Um, I'm, I'm out there, I'm on their agenda.
Thank you.
Whenever, right. They haven't sent me the agenda yet, so I don't, but I think the meeting is next week, if I'm not mistaken.
Second Tuesday of every month is the library meetings.
Okay, thank you. And then any update on recycle center? With uh with Bruce working?
We can discuss that.
Oh, that's.
That's, that's personnel that.
I thought we was.
That goes into executive session.
Okay, excuse me?
And that's part of jumping descriptions, which, which I will do when I'm there.
No, sorry about that. Apologize.
No worry.
That's it for me.
Okay, then if there's anything else, I will take a motion to go into executive session to discuss personnel and town manager search updates. Um, as premature knowledge will be disadvantage to the town.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
Oh, with members of the board and Mike. And that was an edit to the motion. And then we just need to record the side from it. Uh, we don't have to, do we don't, all in favor to go into it? We just motion, the motion we're in.
Yeah, yeah.
Motion's going.
I'm, I'm kinda new at this. So then you just need me to record the time and any action, correct? Okay.
All right. Thank you, Theresa.
Thank you, Theresa.
Hey, Theresa, do you have, um,